All right, good evening, everybody. Tonight is the Monday, January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Lakeville Select Board. With us in person, we've got members Fabian and Day, and then joining us remotely this evening is member Carboni. So, is there anybody that is recording the meeting besides Lake Cam this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to select board announcements then. It's that time of year. Nomination papers for the April first, two thousand and twenty-four annual town election will be available Monday, January eighth today, at the Town Clerk's Office by appointment only. The last day to obtain papers is February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the deadline to return them with signatures is February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. Papers can be pulled from the Town Clerk's Office on normal business days from eight AM to four thirty PM, Monday through Thursday, and eight AM to twelve PM on Friday by appointment only. For more information, call the Town Clerk's Office at five oh eight nine four six eight eight zero zero. The Treasurer and Tax Collector would like to let residents know that the third and fourth quarter real estate tax bills have been mailed and third quarter taxes due February first, two thousand and twenty-four. I just want to say thank you to DPW, Police and Fire for all their work yesterday with the snowstorm. I know that second wave caught me off guard, didn't know where we were going to get that snow. But roads look really good this morning. I didn't hear of any major incidents as far as public safety goes. And this is our first January meeting, so happy new year, everybody that's out there. Leah, Lorraine, do you have anything else you'd like to share before moving on?
Nope.
All right, Mr. Sky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's my last regular select board meeting as your town administrator. I'm very thankful for the opportunity to work with you, this organization, and the many engaged residents who participate in Lakeville's boards and committees. Lakeville's a very special place in a unique community which deserves exemplary services and management. I'm especially appreciative of our tremendous staff who bring the very best to the town on a daily basis. Our employees are the town's ambassadors to the public, and their dedication and competence is the most important component in our organization's ability to respond to the public's needs and accomplish the town's objectives. Reflecting on my nearly three years as your town administrator, it's my sincerest hope that the town finds a way to defiance objectives, both for the organization and for the community. Sadly, the ability to listen often seems like a lost art. Ours is a time of change and uncertainty, and the lack of a common vision significantly impacts the ability of the town to move forward with a sense of collective confidence and determination. My greatest regret is that we were unable to inspire the community by demonstrating a commitment to common cause. Thank you once again, best wishes to all of you going forward. The next meeting of the Select Board will be on January twenty-second here at the Lakeville Police Station. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ari. And it is sad that tonight is your last regularly scheduled meeting with us. I do thank you for your time and all that you were able to accomplish, and I wish you the best in your new role, and I'm sure they'll be very happy to have you in that position.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ari, very much. You know, I think Brian might have forgotten that we had planned on scheduling, I think it was four more meetings from tonight until the nineteenth, so.
Friday at five for the next couple of weeks?
I don't know if that's physically possible at this point.
We'll figure that out. Okay, any other announcements tonight, sir?
Yes.
All right, thank you. To move on to Agenda Item Three, Discuss and Possible Vote on Select Board Minutes for December fourth, eleventh, and eighteenth. Tracy, miracle worker, in the middle of the holiday season getting all those done. Did everybody have a chance to review those? Have any comments or corrections?
I do have some corrections. Do you want to take them individually, Brian?
Sure, yep, that's fine. Does anybody have any comments or corrections for December fourth?
I do.
Okay.
Page five, second paragraph, halfway down, on the right, it says here, you know, after member Carboni asked, what was the highest pay for snow removal, Mr. Sky said, "Don't budget for two fifteen."
Okay, we won't.
Well, yeah, actually, I think what I meant was, two thousand and fifteen was the highest year.
Yes.
On the presentation, we showed a number of years, and two thousand and fifteen was the crazy year.
Okay.
That's what I meant.
I'll add in the word "year."
Okay, thank you, Tracy. I'm like, yeah, okay, I'm not budgeting for two fifteen. That's good.
Okay, was there anything else for the fourth?
No, that's all I have for the fourth.
Leah, did you have anything for the fourth?
No, other than to just, you know, thank Tracy. It's never easy to do the tax classification, so I appreciate your efforts there, Tracy.
I could be an assessor.
Yeah, you could be an assessor.
Okay. All right, if there are no other comments or corrections, entertain a motion to approve the Select Board Meeting Minutes of December fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. And we're doing, and give me a second.
Second.
And we're doing all roll call tonight, Tracy? Since we have somebody remote, okay. Member Carboni?
Carboni, aye.
Member Fabian?
Aye.
And Day, aye, thank you. Moving on to the minutes for December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. I had one small thing from that. Did you have something, Lorraine?
You first, Brian.
Page eight, I'll do my best to explain this. About halfway down, it's the forty-three Main Street section. It says Chairman Day said he did not realize that they own the parcel of land that aligns a bridge street. It was that they do not own the parcel of land. Rhino Capital does not own that parcel. And that was the only thing I had.
Where was that?
About halfway down on page eight.
Yep.
The first word on that line says, "Did not realize," of that particular line.
Ah.
So it should say, "Did not realize that they do not own the parcel." That is owned by a different party. Anybody else have something for the eleventh?
I did on that page eight, a little further down, though.
Good.
On the left, where it says "worth," it should be "having a conversation," instead of "worth have a conversation."
Good. Anything else for the eleventh, anybody?
I'm good.
Okay, Leah, you good?
I'm good.
All right. Hearing nothing else, entertain a motion to approve the Select Board Meeting Minutes of December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Arrived.
As revised.
As revised.
Second.
Okay, member Carboni?
Carboni, aye.
Member Fabian?
Aye.
Day, aye, thank you. And finally, December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I did not have anything on this one.
On the eighteenth, is that where we're on now?
Yes.
Are we on the eighteenth?
Yes, yep.
You want me to run through them?
Sure.
Oh, God.
How many you got? Go ahead.
All right, page one. Under Discuss and Possible Vote to Award the Loom Pond Lodge, second sentence, Chairman Day said the contract for Loom Pond Lodge management had been sent. Just change it to "sent."
Okay.
Down toward the bottom of that same paragraph, where it says Park Commission Chair Turcot said, "Would the Board make the fee waiver decision?" I would suggest that we change it to Park Commission Chair Turcot asked, "Would the Board make the fee waiver decision?"
Okay, was another one?
Page two. Kind of halfway down the page, same type of situation. Park Commission Chair Turcot said, "Are you going to do the lead fees?" I would just suggest change that to "ask." Asked, "Are you going to do the lead fees?"
Okay, see it?
Okay. Page three. Under Discuss and Possible Vote to Renew Common VIC License for Aramart, under where it says Chairman Day had some comment, "Aramart needs to do a better job on the renewal of these licenses." I would just suggest that do a better job on the renewal timing of these licenses. Because I think that that was more of the question that we had, was more of the timing versus maybe the content of the actual renewal.
Yeah, Tracy had to chase them quite a bit.
Yeah. Yeah. On page six. Under Discuss and Possible Vote to Appoint Intra-Town Administrator, it's like the third sentence. Says here, "You both know the challenges we will be facing, period." And then it says, "She wanted to make a motion to appoint Bob Nunes as interim." I actually made the motion. I said, you know, I'd like to make a motion, but I don't, but I actually made the motion.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
It's.
Oh, there it is. Got it.
Right, and then in the next sentence, Chairman Day asked member Carboni, "Asked if member Fabian," I think it should read something like, you know, Chairman Day asked member Carboni if member Fabian could, you know, speak to this. Just get rid of that second "asked." And that was it for me, and so I think that, you know, Tracy gets an A for, you know, three heated or loaded meeting minutes. This was very well done, Tracy, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Leah, did you have anything you'd like to say for the eighteenth?
Nope.
Okay, hearing no further corrections, entertain a motion to approve the Select Board Meeting Minutes of December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
As revised.
As revised. Nobody?
Arrived.
Okay, second.
Thank you. Member Carboni?
Carboni, aye.
Member Fabian?
Aye.
Day, aye, thank you, that's all three of them. So moving on to Agenda Item Four, Discuss and Possible Vote to Award the Surgis Drug and Alcohol Testing Contract. Lacey, would you want to speak to this at all, or do you think it's self-explanatory from what we've seen?
So, yeah, that's part of the southeastern regional group.
Well, Ari's waving you up to a microphone, so. Can't hear you otherwise.
I'm kind of shy.
All right, so HR Director Marshall coming forward.
So, we are part of that southeastern regional group, that's the top piece, and they do the contract for, there's forty-seven of us that are included in the group. So, every three years, it went up like five dollars, so it wasn't a big increase, so I recommend to approve it.
All right. Does anybody have questions for Ms. Marshall?
I have one quick question. On the contract itself, I know that this was an agreement sample. On, let's see, one, two, three, on the fourth page, where it says under the notices for the city or town, and it would say "attention of," and then it said the town of Abington, is that, should that be, I don't know, I wasn't sure what that was.
They, they got that wrong, so I called him today and he revised it, and so the contract in the signed folder is revised to be the town of Lakeville.
Okay.
Yeah, the only document I have seen said Lakeville, that one page.
That was really the only question that I had on this, but as long as they are meeting the needs of the town, you know, as we're doing our new hires and those other testings that we have to do, the turnaround time is, you know, is good, then I'm all for with going with them again.
Leah, did you have any questions for Lacey?
Well, it's a much more general question, and I know Lacey and I touched on this a few weeks ago. In general, I'm hoping we can address a topic of who gets tested and.
That's funny, I would love to discuss that, because we've actually done ten in the last six months, and out of those ten, six of them were part-time.
Right.
It's about a hundred and sixty dollars a person. So I think maybe revising it to look at who really needs one, instead of having everyone. Because we have two library part-time clerks that will be hiring soon, and I don't know that it's necessary for them to get the physical and the testing.
This is another one of these where I'm sure it started for a particular reason, but all these years later, maybe that reason applies, maybe it doesn't apply. I'm not saying it's good or bad or otherwise, I'm just saying at some point, and I trust Lacey will bring that to us.
Yeah.
You know, on your calendar, or, you know, when you've done some research on it.
On my many items.
Yeah, but, you know, that's exactly the point. I mean, you know, six part-timers is, that's a lot of, it's a lot of money, so, you know, maybe we can just start at the, you know, we've done that over the course of my four years, it's like, does it still apply? You know, should it be done the same way, should we change it? But I feel confident you can put all that together for us.
You're making the metrics for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if you want to work with Ari for the next couple of weeks, or Bob, to, you know, figure out when you want to brand, or you said you have a number of recommendations, whether it's the twenty-second or in February, you know, let's work out when to bring those forward and go through them all together. All right, may I would like to make a motion on this contract? Yes, ma'am.
There's only one signature line, typically the TA signs, so in your motion, if you want to authorize the sign.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the award to Surgis Drug Alcohol Testing Contract to advantage drug testing of Andover, Massachusetts, and allow the town administrator to sign said contract.
Second.
Do we need to say the date or not, since it's in the contract?
Well, yeah, I was just looking for the date, I just realized that.
It looks like it's December thirty-one, twenty-six?
It's from January one, twenty-four through twelve thirty-one, twenty-six.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, member Carboni?
Carboni, aye.
Member Fabian?
Aye.
Day, aye, thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item Five, Discuss Path Going Forward Regarding the Planning Department Organization Staffing. So we have with us tonight Mark Knox, Chairman of the Planning Board. If you'd like to come forward for this, and Kathy, if you'd like to come forward as well, because I'm sure you'd be a wealth of knowledge in this discussion.
Chairman, I believe the Board has the memo that Mr. Resnick provided regarding various tasks involved at the Planning Department currently rise.
So, I mean, leave it to everybody to see where we'd like to take this tonight, but I think at least for now, in the absence of a planner right now, and we thank Mr. Resnick for his time with us, who's just recently departed, and for all that he did. You know, how can we best support the Planning Board, Planning Department? Kathy's explicitly, you know, what are your needs going to be over the next few months, whatever it needs to be to, until we figure out what to do with this position? So, I don't know if my Board members have any thoughts, or Chairman Knox, do you have any thoughts that you'd like to give on maybe outstanding matters the Planning Board has, where we can try to provide assistance, or how you'd like to see this moving forward for the next, at least the next few weeks, couple of months?
I'd like to see no changes.
None, okay.
Not currently.
Okay.
You know, I've been on the Board almost five years, Kathy's been the clerk, I think, the entire time. I think some really good things came out of Mark's presence, and Kathy actually spoke earlier today. Templates for the way things get done, that they're just super beneficial to have them, that we can continue to use those. Maybe we reconvene with you after three months and see where we stand, but I think that the Planning Board is in a good spot to move forward without the position being filled immediately.
Immediately, okay.
And if you guys are all right with that, reconvening, but if something changes in the meantime, and when I say that on your part, that you feel the position needs to be filled, I would really like involvement from at least two Planning Board members, if that was the case.
Okay.
But I'd certainly entertain, and if the position was entertained to be refilled, some changes in the structure of it.
The structure itself, okay.
If I can, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
Through you to Mark Knox. Mark, has the Planning Board met to discuss? I know that it's been the holiday season, but has the Planning Board met to discuss, you know, what their thoughts were moving forward with regards to the vacated position for now?
Not as a group, I actually wanted to put that on our agenda for the upcoming meeting on Thursday, then we could return. Or maybe not return to a meeting, but send a results of a recommendation from the Board as a full vote.
Okay, that'd be welcome.
Okay. I did have one other thing, Mr. Chairman. Now, Mark Resnick attended a lot of these meetings, and, you know, basically, you know, carried a lot of information from those meetings and did the work outside of the meeting. So, my only question is, who would be attending those meetings in his place to carry on some of these projects that are ongoing? Like, to pick up the torch right now, so to speak?
Yeah, because like in his memo, in addition to planning, he's got ZBA, Open Space, CPC, Master Plan, and then some other ad hoc projects. Is that something that, are you discussed with Mark before his departure at all?
No, really, no.
Okay.
If I could.
Absolutely.
Go with Kathy first.
Go ahead, Kathy.
So I also still presently attend the zoning board. I attend the CPC, the only one not on the list is Open Space. I mean, that wouldn't be a big deal, it's only usually one meeting a month.
All right. So that's something, you'd be open to attending if necessary?
Also CPC support is something to think about as well. The, you know, other being here, Christina Costa Reyes was kind of Mark's backup on stuff, so I could talk to Christina about filling in some of that role.
Okay. Yeah, because they've got a number of projects now going, and some other ones being submitted, it looks like, as well. Is that something perhaps Kathy and yourself can work with Christina on, just to kind of figure out expectations of the next?
Yeah, I've kind of been doing that with Mark.
Great.
But it would be good to have a backup as well.
Nice.
If I could, Mr. Chair.
Oops, sorry, go ahead.
Just to recommend also that maybe the Select Board reach out to John Oliveri, Chairman, and the chairmen of all those boards and committees, just to get their feedback. You know, I appreciate you asking me here tonight to get my feedback, but they're probably just as well versed into what they feel they need or would want for support. And not that Kathy can't, but sometimes maybe they have a different feeling.
No, we could certainly do that. Let's see, so we got one, two, three, four. My members okay if they reach out to the other chairs and just see if they have any immediate concerns?
Yeah, I think that's okay. I think it's going to come down to us, even if we don't fill the position, to actually budget the position.
Yep.
You know, to make the decision on budgeting the position or not. And I'd like to hear what, before we go making that decision, what the other chairs.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Now, I know, wasn't Christina supporting CPC for a little bit?
I think at the beginning.
At the beginning.
When it came to the startup, sort of the structural startup stuff, she was helping out with that.
Okay, all right, and now I know you're going, you're there, right, okay. So I mean, technically, you are CPC, Planning Board, and zoning.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so it really would be good to hear from Open Space and.
And the one thing I would know, Mr. Chairman, is that, and to the rest of the board, is that it's probably not realistic to expect that the same level of staff support can be provided with fifty percent of the staffing. And so somebody's going to have to give, you know, at this, when it comes to this. It's going to have to be some type of accommodations made or understanding that, that, you know, Kathy can't go to every night meeting, you know, that kind of thing.
Right.
We don't eat up five evenings in one week.
You can't expect that.
Not at all. No, we'll certainly have to work through that. Go ahead, Lorraine.
So with regards to the reporting structure, you know, for Kathy, I know because of the Planning Department that was created, reported up through the planner. So just for, you know, purposes now, we should have, identify some reporting structure for Kathy, you know, in the event that she needs support or direction for, you know, any decisions that need to be made. Would that go right to the town administrator?
An org chart wise, that would be correct. I mean, it's basically a vacancy between Kathy and yourself at this point, right?
Right, the way the Board has structured that department, the planner reports through the town administrator and the Select Board.
Yep. I mean, I've got two weeks left, but are you okay with that for now? And then, I mean, it sounds like maybe Christina can lend a hand.
Yeah, I have days, so.
I think we'll definitely have to work on that, maybe we touch on that again the twenty-second, Lorraine?
I just want to make sure that Kathy has what she needs.
Absolutely.
You know, for a smooth transition through this.
I mean, Kathy and I have spoken, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she needs to have that, get that go-to person.
Yeah, Kathy and I have spoken about that already.
Very good.
Oh, okay, good.
To come, I'm sorry, I'm just answering the question. Kathy and I have spoken already about, you know, I've told her to come to me when there, if there are issues or problems, and then I'll connect it with Bob, so he can integrate into the organization as well.
Okay, that's excellent. Kathy, do you have any specific concerns that haven't already been addressed here, or things on your mind, or?
I mean, not really, I think it's good right now, it is kind of slow.
Okay.
So it's a good time to kind of see exactly how this plays out. But, I mean, if any of the larger projects come in sooner than expected, then if not a planner, definitely some type of a consult with some type of expertise for that type of a project. But just the day-to-day, I think it's going to be okay, we'll see how it goes.
Okay, for now.
I think what Kathy's saying kind of goes to what Leah had said too, that in budgeting the position, even if it's just the department and the Planning Board needs, and it may not be just Planning Board, but ZBA need that assistance to get that professional help.
Right.
Prior to having a planner, wasn't it, was it Kathy? Were you the one that did, like, all the communication with peer review with our, like, sub, our contract, who would do peer review and everything anyways?
Mostly, yeah.
Some of the time I would have contact, just as the Chair, I would, emails circulated through me as well as Kathy, but it was a shared responsibility. But Kathy did definitely all the nuts and bolts of filling out forms and emailing things like that from the office.
Yeah, so that's not new for, that wouldn't be new for you. If someone, if somebody needs to do a peer review, then, you know, you used to coordinate all that anyways.
No, and, you know, the longer we've done it, the better process we've gotten. So, and that's something Mark and I were starting to work on in some other types of plans.
I think it's more a matter of not so much, Kathy's got the skills for all that, it's just a question of hours in a day. CPA didn't exist before.
Yeah.
Then, you know, that's.
Yeah, but.
Mark spent a fair amount of time working on the CPA.
Yeah, but just in like the next three months, if someone wants a peer, it's, you can do that, you can handle, okay.
So I think we'll just all keep an extra ear open. If you need help with anything, speak up early, and, you know, I'm sure planning will help you out where necessary. Ari and then Bob will do it, what they can, and we appreciate you taking it on. So it's, I think, you do great work, you'll continue doing great work, and we'll help each other get through this time period.
Okay.
And then as a follow-up for me, I'll follow up with the other chairs as well, just to see if there's any immediate concerns, and.
Yeah, where they did receive services from Mark, definitely include them in the conversation.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't want to, us, our conversation tonight, be the only.
Won't, won't be the last, but it seemed like the most important to have first.
Yeah, we, we appreciate that too.
Lorraine, did you have something?
Yeah, I just had one interesting, um, where, to who are the, um, Mark Resnick's emails being forwarded to at this point?
Kathy just had her hand up.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right, as long as they're going somewhere, okay, good.
All right, um, any other thoughts on this topic for this evening? No, go once, go twice. All right, then we'll move on, so thank you both for coming tonight, appreciate it, and, uh, we'll keep the communication going.
Thank you.
Okay, um, do we wanna do six, or would you like to try to get environmental partners out?
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One thing I forgot to mention, that we talked about, that you know, talked about with this, is the idea of some type of recognition for Kathy.
Yes, yep.
Physician work that she's doing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have, you know, done some checking through with the union on that, it's something we can do if we define it, define the, the work involved.
Okay.
So, you know, if the board's amenable to that, I would suggest that they have, you have, um, uh, Lacy, maybe Bob work on that.
Okay.
Put something together for your consideration.
Okay.
Does that sound, does that sound all right to the board?
Uh, does to me, Leah, any thoughts on that?
Um, if I caught that whole thing, which is.
It's tied in.
Yep, because she's gonna be working out of her, yep, 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 I agree.
Okay.
Much simpler way to put it.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, that'd be great, um, so you and Lacy will start that process at least?
Yeah.
Thanks. All right, um, you know what, six and seven are pretty quick. Um, okay, agenda item six, discuss and possible vote on designee for union matters, which at the moment is Ari. Um, so I guess the question really was, do we just simply want to transition this to the interim town administrator, or take the opportunity to make any changes? I mean, the only union matters right now are JLMC?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, there's, you know, maybe labor relation things that come along, but, but contract, sort of contracts, the only, the only outstanding contract is.
It's the only active thing.
Police, right.
Okay. Um, do board members have any thoughts on this?
Just to keep it with the town administrator, correct?
Uh, that's one option, yep, we can do that, or if there's any thoughts on changing it?
Um, I don't. So we've always had the select board position, that's like the union representative, so, I mean, I don't know why it has to be one or the other, I mean.
Well, actually, that's a good point, cause you're already that person, so is this just filling out that, the, the roster then, we're Ari's spot, basically, we can't have two of us on there?
Um, I guess I don't understand then, what, why this whole thing is different.
I think it was one of the, it was simply one of the things that had come up while Ari and I were discussing his transition, and what are the things that you're appointed to? And going down the list, this is one of them, that he's actively involved in.
I think you asked us to put this on the agenda, I think the board asked us to put this on the agenda for this meeting, didn't you?
Yeah, that, but even last time around, I'm not sure why it's, you know, sort of coming up, because the town administrator has, you know, always worked on union matters, and there was a selectman that was sort of a representative. Um, so, um, I would just assume that the town administrator would continue. I don't recall us, did we formally appoint Ari in general at the beginning of negotiations last year? I don't really think.
There was a discussion, um, I believe it was after the last election.
Yeah.
And, and the, the board directed me to continue working on the, on the, on, on, on the, at that point it was just the JLMC piece.
Right, it was the JLMC, yeah, that piece of it, so I guess that's my thing, my thing is, I don't really understand, you know, why it sort of has to change. Um, I do believe there was a decision made, um, not to involve the select board member who's the representative going to JLMC, but I'm just kind of unsure why why we would change it, I mean, I just automatically assumed the town administrator, the interim, is gonna be involved in this whole thing.
That's totally fine.
Right.
That was my assumption as well, this might just be codifying it whether we need to or not, it's probably easily debatable.
Yep, I mean, you know, there's a conversation for a different day on what perhaps we should be doing, um, which is probably an executive session matter that I don't feel comfortable discussing here, because, you know, it could pertain to strategy, but as far as,
We can discuss that.
Um, I don't know why the town administrator wouldn't be, the interim wouldn't be involved in the negotiation stuff.
All right, so, I mean, it sounds like then, is there an agreement that there's really no vote even necessary, we just continue, carry on as we carry on?
I think it was definitely worth having the discussion, just to make sure that we're not taking anything for granted, or, um, leaving something, you know, just hanging out there, so I think we should just leave it the way it is, um, but I'm glad that, you know, cause this is an important matter, that we at least, you know, brought it up. So.
Yeah, um, under number seven, I would say that I would, um, really request that we have, um, as soon as Bob's on board, we have, um, an executive session just to discuss the matter, the whole JLMC matter in general.
Yep, we can do that.
Um, you know, as soon as possible, actually.
Let's take a note. All right, so are we moving on, no changes, moving on to seven then?
Yes.
Okay, agenda item seven, discuss and possible vote to authorize town administrator and town council to discuss various matters with the interim town administrator designated prior to execution, execution of employment agreement, um, so later tonight in executive session, um, we'll be discussing some of the things for the interim town administrator. This was primarily just to, um, give Ari and town council, um, support and comfort, and being able to discuss matters with them ahead of a contract being signed, so we didn't lose any time, given that time is precious in the event that in this evening's discussion, anything came up that might push any dates out.
I mean, I don't like open and vague, and I kind of think this is kind of vague, but, um, Bob's a professional, and he needs to be able to hit the ground running, so, um, that's why I had asked last week if you even had an email address yet, because I thought that there were some emails that we should be including him in, so again, I'm also not asking you to start working ahead of your work date, so, um, but I, you know, I I know that you're a professional and, you know, you probably need more, I, I'd probably like information before you even sit in the chair, so, um, I would just assume include Bob in mostly what's going on.
Lorraine, any questions?
No, not at this time.
Okay, uh, anybody like to make a motion on this item?
Yep, I'll make a motion that we authorize the town administrator and town council to discuss the various matters with the interim town administrator designated prior to execution of employment agreement.
Second.
Okay, thank you, uh, member Carbone?
Carbone, aye.
Member Fabian?
Aye.
Member Day, aye, thank you everybody, appreciate that. Eight, discuss and possible vote regarding site plan review for the property located at two and four Bedford Street, which, if you're not familiar, that's the old A-Frame building location. Uh, let's see. Um, I looked at this, didn't have any questions that pertain to water allocation or curb cuts. Does anybody have anything?
Did I miss something, or is, is there gonna be no, it's, it's a well right now, there's, it's not, um, water, infrastructure, I don't believe.
Well, there's no, yeah, there's no allocation request in front of us tonight.
Right.
So this hasn't even been seen by the planning board yet, right?
I think it's on their Thursday meeting?
Thursday, I believe, yeah.
Let me double check.
Is they just looking for comments, um, you know, from all the various, uh, committees and boards? Yeah, cause it, without the water allocation and curb cut, yeah, there really isn't anything else. I thought, I'm, I'm happy to see that there's actually a plan, um, in place, and, uh, that we're, we're doing some, there's some business development happening here. It's just, it's nice to see the, the plan.
It's not on their eleventh, so maybe their next meeting. Planning board that is.
Oh, I thought it was this one.
So did I.
Oh, maybe cause it's not enough time to get the information back, I think that's what, um, Kathy indicated. It'll be on the twenty-fifth.
Um, my only question is, um, it says four contractor base, didn't we just do the other one, um, on?
Oh, on Rhode Island Road.
Yeah, where they were gonna perhaps make more or less, depending on what people wanted, and because there was a water connection, we, um, said it can only be this much water, um, so, I, I would just wait, I guess, and see what these.
Oh, they do show the well location, it's in the, if you've rotated it, it's way up in the upper right-hand. Um, kind of parallel where it says ECE. It's like an approximate well with a big circumference around it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, according to the plan, they're gonna be removing two of the existing curb cuts and closing them.
Okay.
And they're gonna make that one in the middle, but this is a state road, so we wouldn't have to be involved in that at all.
That'd be mast dot, right? So, yeah, we're pretty limited here.
I guess we could say, um, no comment.
Yep. I've got none.
Yep, I don't either, I just, it's really, I mean, I know we have all kinds of plans and everything here, but it's kind of hard to know with three lines, construction of four contractor bay buildings. But, you know what, in these cases, I always count on a lot of the staff, DPW director, building commissioner, fire, police, to cover all those bases on those important things.
All right, so it sounds like no specific comments back to planning board this time. If there's nothing else, move on to number nine. Discuss possible vote to schedule select board meetings for February, March, and April, already here, um. Any challenges with the suggested dates? One of them is to avoid President's Day.
I thought that they fell in line really nicely, actually, I, I plugged them all into my calendar, and they seemed to flow.
Okay, six.
I'm good.
I did have a question though, um, I, oh, we brought it up at a previous meeting before, uh, about maybe having a start of five thirty versus six o'clock, is that something that we'd like to maybe talk about now with these meetings, or do we wanna keep it six o'clock?
I'm usually fine to do five thirty if other folks make it, um.
I just find that when we have long agendas, we tend to, you know, reschedule until a little bit earlier.
Yep.
I'm okay either way.
Okay, so maybe we'll just plan on five thirty for now and adjust as necessary? Uh, do we need to vote on those? It says possible vote.
I don't think we need to vote.
Need to vote on that.
We need to vote, yeah.
Those days good for you, Bob?
We'll give you the, I don't think they're the February twelfth and twenty-sixth, March the eleventh to twenty-fifth. No, we're gonna quiz them right now. We'll work it all out. All right, um.
And if he's got a conflict, we can change.
Yeah.
It's fine, we're pretty flexible.
All right, so move on to number ten, um, ARPA water project update with environmental partners, thank you for your patience.
I have a, a handout to give to you, I think, do you have our memo from December we gave to Ari on the, the update with John Paul and the park situation?
I believe so, but I don't mind flipping along if you brought new ones.
I have a summary memo, I have some of the pages, so.
Great. Tracy, do you need names and such for the record, or?
No, I don't.
Okay, great.
And I have a full memo from December twenty-first, if you don't have it handy, so, do you need a copy?
Um, which one is this one here, twenty-first, I have the twenty-first one.
You do?
Yep.
Um, I'll take it.
I'll give one to.
Give it.
Oh, you do, okay. So we were here a few months ago, and.
Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you, so I'm Paul Mills from Environmental Partners, this is Sabrina Casanata, so, the short story is, uh, there are, there are no issues with the, with the Ted Williams Camp and the Old Town Hall water connection, they're pretty straightforward and they're cut and dry. When we were here a few months ago, the issue at hand was, how do we negotiate with Taunton and Blueberry Estates?
Right.
And to cut a long story short, we wrote a letter to Taunton clarifying what we believed was reasonable position, and the intention of it was to tie into the existing water main at the end of Blueberry Estates and connect to the park, we believe that was reasonable engineering and the way to go, and that was about two-thirds of the cost for the overall project. Since then, we did get a response from Taunton in writing, which actually was reasonable, and, you know, they didn't raise any sho, uh, showstoppers. The opposition we got back was really the terms and conditions that Blueberry Estates, through their legal counsel, through the town's legal counsel, wanted to impose on the job, quite frankly, were, um, in our opinion, uh, prohibitive, um. In short, they want us to basically tie into the water main way back over there before their meter, and it adds about a hundred thousand dollars to the construction cost of the job, and makes it in our minds, uh, highly, both unreasonable and impractical, but unfortunately, we have no leverage to push back with Blueberry Estates here. So after consultation with, uh, Ari and town council, uh, we've kind of put that part of the job on hold, and I know when we were here a few months ago as well, there were some questions about the broader future of the park, and what is the town's vision for that park. So our recommendation at, at this time is, we can proceed with the bidding for the, um, Ted Williams Camp and the Old Town Hall part of the job, that's pretty straightforward. It's somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in terms of, uh, construction costs. The ARPA, the other large chunk of money was for the John Paul Park site. The options that are on the table is, we, we could go back, and this is where, we talked about this in our memo, and in my, in my word page summary here, we could convert the existing well to a drinking lawn well, hopefully, we may need to add some chemical treatment, and hopefully do a lot more testing, or we could, we could consider obviously, and this is, you know, your choices, to drill a, a well and drill a new drinking water well. But, um, the practical option of tying into the Taunton water supply unfortunately has kind of fallen uh, on its knees, and we don't have any leverage to push back there. So that's, that's the summary of what's happened in the past two months, um. I wish I had better news, but we don't have any leverage with Taunton, and Taunton actually, quite frankly, were reasonable, it was Blueberry Estates and their legal counsel wanted conditions that, you know, would make your job cost an arm and a leg. I'll stop there.
And, and if I remember correctly, the well options, feds or Plymouth County, I forget who said like, we won't fund those, we don't consider them water infrastructure.
Yeah, under the ARPA funding rules, for whatever reasons, they, yeah, correct, they weren't gonna fund us doing well work, um, I don't know why.
Right.
So we're here seeking your direction on what the next steps would be, we, we, we could bid, we could bid Ted Williams Camp and Old Town Hall by itself, it's a smaller job. Um, we had, we had hope by bidding it as one larger job, we'd get more economy of scale and more interest. So that, those two jobs, if you were to ask me today, it's somewhere between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars, probably a hundred to a hundred and fifty is more of an accurate range. So you have unspent ARPA money here on the table, that you need to consider how you're going to spend it or not spend it.
Any questions so far?
Um, do we know how much we've spent in legal fees trying to work on all this stuff? And if anyone's covering the legal fees?
Town's been paying that, I, I could, it's not a lot, but I can get, I can get back to you on that.
Okay. Um, I I just never saw this totally viable from the beginning, um, so I've always been on the, um, on the, try to get a well um, going over there, there is a well, right, and it would have to be.
I mean, best case, it'd have to be tested again, and water, I mean, we know that, so there's water quality and then there's water quantity, the water quantity may be okay, but for water quality, it has to be drinking water standards, it's probably gonna need some pH systems, so it's probably gonna need some level of treatment, and then it also totally needs some level of monitoring and sampling on a regular basis. Um, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but it's. Um, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but it's it's an option. Um, but unfortunately, the Arpa aren't gonna pay you for for well work.
Right.
We could explore that and see where that lands, but I don't want to um give you any false expectations. Yeah, it might work out fine, but it uh would require some additional testing and monitoring.
In in this classification of funding, is this the one that is only? Water infrastructure, sewer.
Right, only infrastructure, water, sewer, broadband, and the water has not has to be potable water off of a utility, not not well water.
So we're already limited in how this can be spent in the first place.
It's just the federal regs.
Yeah. I mean, do we have any, to to your point, do we have any other projects? In those areas that we're aware of coming down the pipe? Or are we gonna look at these funds potentially just going back because we have nothing to spend them on?
Um, well, it would have to be reprogrammed if there's something else you wanted to use it for, because it is project specific.
Right.
So the the board would have to come up with a, have to have a new proposal. You know, there there are things that are looked at. At one point, we looked at Clear Pond, uh things like that. You know, Clear Pond has other implications as well from a development standpoint that I know the board's concerned about.
Sure.
So.
Yep, okay. What's the timing on these funds? They have to be allocated by December this year, or is that?
Yeah, um, oh, the county, it's cuz on the county side, the county wants, is looking for a report from participating localities by March, end of March, as to what they plan to do. And by June, um to to, you know, to provide some sort of like final closeout plan. Because they, cuz they need the time to decide whether they wanna reprogram the money, or they don't wanna send money back to the federal government either.
Yeah, right. No one wants to do that. Lorraine, did you have any thoughts on this so far?
No, I definitely wanna, I hate to hold up the other two projects, um but I understand the the economy of scope there. Um, when you put those projects out for bid, but, you know, I don't really wanna hold up the other two if. Well, I guess we we have some time to make a little decision on on when we do go out to bid. So if we wanna hold off and see if there's, you know, something else to add, you know, to the project and.
I mean, I I would recommend going forward on the other two. You've gotta get those, you you wanna be able to show the county you're moving them forward. And um and this is a very, a rather large project tied to that, which is the bathroom project at Old Town Hall.
Yep.
And that that that's, that with the septic is a is a good sized project, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it does seem to make sense that at least move those forward, keep them going.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we. Could revisit this if necessary later, if if nothing else is coming forward. I I don't know what else to say, right? If we've got a certain allocation of money, we've got no other project to spend it on, and nothing coming forward. As much as this stinks, there might not be another option, cuz the the other thing I'd ask is if we do decide to fund it ourselves and go the well route. And this is kind of, I suspect, an unanswerable question at this point from yourselves, which would be. What systems do we need to maintain that water over time? And if if we find out like, oh, it's seven thousand dollars worth of maintenance a year, then we're gonna quickly run into where this was a better option. Even though it's terribly.
So that 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 is my 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 question, though, with going forward with this one. What happens? What is the maintenance cost of this water line? Taunton would have to fix it. We don't have a water department, right?
The whole goal here was to try and get you out of the wa- or not get you into the water business, I should say. And so, but once you go, once you have a well that's potable water, it has to meet standards, it has to be tested frequently. So I think I put a number here in our memo, like, you know, five thousand dollars a year is not an unreasonable number. Um, and you've got to prove to D E P that that you're, you know, taking good care of your public water supply.
Right.
Um, uh, which means you gotta have somebody on staff or hire outside third party who's a licensed inspector and a water system operator. So it's, once you go down that road, you're getting into the water game.
Right, so what happens if there's a crack in this connection, this water connection?
You, if you if you pursue in the well option by itself.
No, not the well option, the other connecting to the Taunton water.
Oh, that that one, those two, uh, we were so focused on John Paul, I don't believe we actually asked him about those two specifically. I don't believe there'd be an issue at all. I believe um I will confirm that they will take care of the service connection, uh maintenance and repair if it happens.
But I thought we had mentioned, I thought someone had mentioned at the last meeting that they could bill us for it. And I guess that's my fear. We're talking about a water main here.
Well, but those two, the tunnel and the Ted Williams camp are small.
Very small.
It's it's a small meter. It's a, I mean, it's a nominal fee, so you'll be billed on it on a quarterly basis as per.
I'm sorry, let me clarify. I'm talking about John Pond.
Oh, if we did the.
If we did a water main connection at John Pond, and then let's say there's, you know, how much main is there? Would there be to?
They, okay, Taunton did say they weren't gonna maintain. It was.
Yes.
Yeah, here's what, here's what we were trying to do. So we were trying to be reasonable, which didn't work out in this case. We had hoped that Taunton would say, we will take care of the operation of maintenance of the water service. They didn't say that. I mean, then we said, well, Blueberry Estates, are you guys gonna do it? And they said, no, we we want you guys to go all the way back to square one and, you know, tie in way over there and spend all kinds of money. So the unfortunate conclusion was, it's costing you more more money to build, and it's costing you more money to operate and maintain, and you're on your own.
Right.
So that's. Where we're at.
Yep, so we have, that's not an option, pretty much.
It's it's not a very, in my opinion, it's a highly unreasonable option and a lot of money for.
Then we have an option of a well, which, like you said, it's gonna put us in the water monitoring, you know, business, so to speak. We're gonna have to either contract out with someone or, and then the other option is to leave it sort of the way that it is. And maybe we could, you know, make it a little nicer with nicer porta potties and everything. Um, but I do know that there was, you know, a lot of interest from townspeople and from folks that use that facility to see water there. I wanna be able to tell folks that we've investigated every option. And and again, too, sometimes there's a reason why it's been thirty, forty years and there isn't water there. It's not an easy.
Fix.
Fix.
No, it's not.
Um, you know, I definitely agree that we should, you know, go forward with um bidding for the Old Town Hall and Ted Williams. But I just think that the. John Pond is uh really difficult.
It's tricky at best.
Yeah.
So so let's say, see a green line here, the the new proposed line. If there are. In a given year, no problems with that line, no roots have grown through it or whatever the case might be, is there any operational cost with that water line? On a, or is it only if there's a problem?
I mean, the the chances of having a water main break are very low, quite frankly. I mean, yes, that won't look well, but but it's, it would be a new pipe, and it would be, it would be very low. So the chances of a water main break are low, where your cost would be is you'd have to, obviously, it's it's gonna be used seasonally. You'd have to, you know, like if you have a seasonal house, you gotta start draining it in the late fall and start it up in the spring or late spring. The chances of the pipe breaking are highly unlikely.
So so generally, our best case scenario, our operational costs are draining it.
Well, well, drain it and then testing, oh, sorry, yes, that's funny, yeah, draining it and routine and doing some routine maintenance, which. Um, yeah, there's there's some cost to to doing that.
So who would do that?
Well, I think you're also gonna. The. Uh. That could be done by it, but by the D P W presumably. I don't know if anyone in town has has a water license, I don't 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 think they do. But you're you're not doing any water treatment, you're not you're not changing the water chemistry, you're doing anything like that. That that ru- ru- routine maintenance to me is is normal stuff. I think a plumber could do it. Um, but that's, but we're not going down this road, right?
It doesn't sound like we should, but um this is what we need to decide, I guess.
Uh, it also triggers, I mean, if we have to go back to square one, it also triggers us redoing, there's more engineering involved, more permitting, more wetlands, more X, Y, and Z. And, you know, not that we're not here to run the meter up, I'm just telling you, it's a whole different ball of wax.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, at a huge cost. So I I I can't, I, in good conscience, I can't recommend spending a lot of money on that line.
No, no, I understand why. Um, again, I guess I'm gonna keep coming back here just to make sure we've exhausted considerations, which is. Ari, do you know by chance, or maybe you could get us if you don't in the next few days, like? Is this like our other pool of money? Is there, how much is unallocated, or do we have to re?
This is all coming, this is this is an award from the county.
So we would have to rebid this as a whole new thing to them.
You'd have to go back to the county's whole with the whole proposal.
Okay, alright, so I mean, we could push forward.
Right now, we've, I have a meeting scheduled for the county on Thursday. You can give an update on where things stand. One of the things we're gonna, this is one that I was gonna introduce him to Bob Noons and, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
One thing they have planned on talking about was this project and the challenges we're facing.
I mean, cuz at the end of the day, we could push forward the other two.
Yeah.
And if this one is a, you know, you said a whole new ball of wax, I mean, there's no harm in going back to the county and saying, these are the roadblocks we've come up against, and here's what it would take to get it done. If they say no, they say no. If they say yes, it's it's not coming from us, our wallet. And, you know, heaven forbid something catastrophic happen in the future. We roll back to how John Pond is today.
Well, and that's, that's my thing. Let's say in in the case of, you know, roots in the, you know, whatever, whatever it is. Slim to none, doesn't mean it's not gonna happen. It could happen.
Yeah, I mean, you you normally get roots in a sewer pipe, not in a water pipe, cuz the roots go in search of water, but the water pipe is pressurized from the inside. So you're never gonna find roots inside a water pipe. You will find roots inside a sewer pipe.
Yep, so.
Just so you know.
Um, so my my thing is, all of a sudden, Taunton says to us, oh, well, that's a hundred thousand dollars to fix. Well, we know we're probably not gonna spend that money on a seasonal park, and then it's kind of all for naught. Um, so I just.
It's a game of unknowns.
Yeah, I almost wish we could go back to the county and say, look, we did the best we could. Um, you sure you won't pay for a well? Which I know isn't part of the.
They just won't.
They won't.
It's just, it's not the rule. It's not the rules.
Like, the the five thousand you estimated here, was that just for the outside operator to do testing and such?
Yes, and that was a a reasonable number, but it's, that's what it costs.
I mean, I I pay about a thousand bucks a year just in my dinky, you know, home well.
There you go.
So I can just imagine what the physical cost for this would be on top of some kind of monitor.
I mean, I I guess my thing is, just because you can do something sometimes, doesn't mean you should be. Um, and I I don't know how much more money, even if the county was willing to give it to us, we could. Throw at it because it still sounds like it's. It's kind of difficult to make it happen, even if we threw more money at it, right? To get a water line there.
Yeah, I mean, the question is, even though, I guess what you're saying is, I was like, even if the federal government is gonna pay for it, should we do it? I think it's gonna be, that's obviously a question you gotta ask yourself carefully. It's gonna cost you, you know, three, four hundred thousand dollars to do this for a seasonal use. There's um, and then you're into the water business for operation and maintenance.
Right.
So you're kinda taking a big leap of leap here into the water business. Um.
And it will fall, right.
I mean, it's, it's up to you to decide. I think the um.
I feel like we're mixing the operational and maintenance, though, between the two a little more. Like, I'm more scared of the well operation and maintenance personally than the line for for.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I mean, right, um, because the 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 chances of the pipe breaking are highly, highly unlikely, but it could happen. And then you have to have a contractor on call who can fix water pipes, which is not unheard of. But yeah, the the well option, you need to have somebody who can do chemical treatment and measure pH and measure quantities and submit reports to D E P and sign off as a water licensed water operator. So either options here, you're getting into water chemistry and responsibility and public drinking water regulations.
Well, I mean, do we just wanna tell them to go ahead and move forward with the other two for now and?
Yeah, I think we definitely move forward with the other two.
Lorraine, you've been quiet for a few minutes. Any additional thoughts?
Oh, I have many, but um I just think that we should move forward with the two.
Alright.
Yeah, and I hate to ask D P W to take on, you know. It was just three years ago, we asked them to take on maintenance of all the parks. And I really don't wanna put the draining and whatever of a water main on their plate.
Blow the frost line anyways? I mean, we're.
Yeah, I mean, we're we're just kinda guessing here what the requirements are. Yes, the the chances of it freezing are low, but but we're going to the ground to feed the, you know, uh.
Yeah, so it looks like every year I close my, I close my irrigation system every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, this will require some level of maintenance.
Yeah, that's fine. Alright, I mean, Ari, what do you need from us tonight to move forward with the other two?
I think that was sufficient.
That's efficient?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
I mean, it would be nice to see, unless it's a waste of everybody's time, which I don't like doing. You know, what is the pros and cons when you compare those two now? Like, are we back to looking at wells? What does an actual maintenance operation versus green line?
You're probably the one who wants staff to come back at a later date with a proposal for John Pond. Um, you know, there are a number of holes at this point with my going, um, the the funding question would be another question. And um, you know, uh, the town planner was deeply involved in some of the planning for that facility as well. So I I think between all those things, it's probably.
Yeah, I wish we had a master plan for that park.
Yeah, and I I feel like, you know, there was a lot of, you know, um, folks that were very concerned about it, like the teams that play there. And if it's a no-go, I think we should be able to give them a solid reason why it's a no-go. Not just, well, we don't think we should be doing that, um, you know, and. I know the people that want water over there aren't gonna be happy no matter what, but I would feel better. Um. Being able to say, we've done this, we've done that. You know, um, so I think we should get to that point where we evaluate both. Which we're not gonna do in the next month, so um we don't need to vote to recommend, I mean, to move the other two forward.
No, I think you've already, you've already basically approved the whole package of.
Yeah.
Projects, you know, we went to to the county. It's just, we're just, um, we we'll just be going back to the county and telling them we can do two, but not the third one.
Or it's just, it's become prohibitive at this point, unless they're willing to consider something else.
Yeah.
Ah, there's no water down Vaughn Street, huh?
Yeah, the the water main, the existing main is in a very inconvenient spot where the closest is that neighborhood that's like kind of above.
Yeah, it's weird.
The area, yeah.
This, yeah, this.
Wow.
And I guess you can't say it's not potable water, cuz.
The current well?
You can't, you can't do the project saying this isn't potable water. It's only for the toilets, let's say.
Well, you could, well, you know, you, I mean, think about it, you could, but you wanna, you wanna avoid the risk of somebody using, drinking non-potable water.
Right.
Innocently, and then they go, oh, gee, they've got some.
Right.
You know, G I i- issues, and then you go, it it's, you really wanna be very careful with gray water and non-potable water.
Yeah.
Yes, can you do it? Yes, is it, you need to be careful with it.
Yeah, I don't think we would wanna do that.
On that road.
Yeah, not in a park that is predominantly for kids.
Stuck with kids, yeah.
They fill their water bottles wherever they find.
Yeah.
Tastes great.
Alright, um, any further discussion on this? I appreciate all the information, by the way. I know it's been a bit of a pain in the neck.
Yeah, I mean, we gave us more than a good college try here, but it's just like, we just can't, you know, we 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 have no leverage, quite frankly. So you recommended we move ahead with bidding the Ted Williams camp and the Old Town Hall. And um, we can get you an email on that. That'll probably be in the next six weeks, and we hopefully will get numbers, you know, by probably the end of February and see where, see where we land.
Yeah, cuz like Ari said, we've got other projects, especially at Town, the Old Town Hall tied to that, so that's, you know, we don't wanna.
Those you should get, those you should get moving. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, awesome.
Alright, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you again. Um, item eleven, building committee updates. Do we have anything on the senior center this evening?
Um, no, we just need to, we're still in the same spot. We need to get together to figure out when. Um, we wanna bring it to um our meeting to bring it in front of the uh select board.
Okay.
So I don't know what.
I've reached out to George Gareo for the final version of the report. I haven't heard back from him on that. I'm gonna check what he's doing today.
Alright. Okay.
So if you can take a look at the next couple agendas and.
Yeah.
See where you may.
If you think it's ready for the twenty second, we can try to, but. How about?
Yeah.
Alright, uh, fire station, Lorraine?
Oh. Um, so the. Um, so the smaller group that had been formed to look at the facility's needs had met, I think it was a couple of nights after, or I think our last meeting. So I asked, uh, our OPM Taylor McDonald to just provide me a quick, uh, blurb as to how I can share this information, um, to the select board. So they met and, um, the facility needs assessment is completed. The civil engineer will be working on the due diligence for the three selected sites. And so far, everything looks good on that. Um, they're in the process of, uh, working on the concept layout for the test fits, uh, for those, uh, sites. They'll be meeting next week to review the concept layouts from the, uh, needs assessment. So, um, I haven't seen anything at this point yet, but, um, so I'm looking forward to, uh, you know, seeing their report out on that, too. So we are moving forward, um, you know, getting, checking off those items on the boxes, so.
Okay.
That's kind of where we're at.
Lee, any questions on that?
Um, yeah, so what's the plan? Did we come up with a plan for, um, money for town meeting? For design?
Not yet. I think we'll be working on that. That'll come up in a discussion as we get a little closer. I don't know that we're I don't have anything to report out on that yet. We're going to be discussing that at a future meeting. We touched upon it about, you know, how we were going to, at what time we were going to be able to bring that to town meeting. I don't know that we'll have plans and ready for a, uh, for June, but.
Yeah, they're just, I mean, you're just getting the needs assessment going now. And what you, I think the plan had been to try to go to town meeting for full design. And not to do that without having some type of renderings you can show the public. So, um, right, so, so there needs to be some of that work done before we can get to that point, so it'd be tough.
Yeah, I just thought it was in the, I thought it was in the capital plan for this past fall, maybe, or I could be.
There's a placeholder.
Placeholder.
Placeholder for FY twenty five.
Yep. So I just don't want to miss the boat if we can make that in any way, shape, or form for town meeting, especially because town meeting's a little later, too, so that gives us an extra. I definitely would like to see the financing for part of the design at least.
All right, um, any other questions or move on to Old Colony?
Moving on.
Um, Old Colony, no updates. So they're just still in the process of bringing their stuff to, um, the state for approval. Uh, do we have any new or old business?
I got one thing, Mr. Chairman, just to, as the board's aware, the governor announced nine C cuts today. Yeah, the, the main effect to the localities is, um, most earmarks were reduced by 50%. So in the case of, um, Lakeville, for example, that means that the $75,000 that had been assigned for, um, uh, the Peach Barn will be cut to 37.5. Um, that, that's, that's my understanding anyway. I haven't gotten the official notification yet. Um, fortunately, we have the $75,000 that was approved at town meeting as well, so we still have a decent, might do a decent amount of work. More significantly, I think, for the town going, will be the implications of FY twenty five. Um, right now, they're showing a consensus revenue number that's probably going to be below the FY twenty four number. Um, I don't think they're looking at cutting our restricted aid, but I wouldn't be, I wouldn't expect much of an increase either.
Remember what our number was for this year?
Nominal number?
Yeah.
Uh, nine, I think nine hundred thousand, I believe.
Okay. All right. Any other older new business? No? Okay. I know we had something from Comcast that came in late. Let me just find that real quick. Let's see.
Yes, ma'am. That, that's a question I have on Comcast. I mean, we usually get at least once or twice two letters a month telling us there's going to be another fee increase. They cut a channel, um, is this something that you guys want to see?
I, I would assume, hope that they're notifying all the customers anyways.
They do.
I mean, I like seeing it because at least then, you know, I, I mean, I have Verizon, so I don't see what goes on at, on Comcast. Like if they've changed channels or whatever. So I do like seeing it.
We don't get these notices from Verizon. They never notify us if they raise costs or cut services.
Let's ask cable if that's in their contract or not.
Yeah. I know Bob has resigned, hasn't he?
Yes.
But.
He would know immediately.
He's never, you know, too far away.
I think he just finished the Verizon one, though, before he left, so.
Because I, I know that, um, some of the channels have changed. I know some of the channels aren't available, that they say, you know, no longer available and, um.
Mr. Chairman, just to go back, circle back for a second.
Yep.
Our, our restricted aid for FY twenty four is 978,148.
All right, thank you.
It also, you know, well, I understand they're going to try to keep the student opportunity act whole. I wouldn't expect a big increase on the school side either.
It's almost good that we don't rely on state aid for much around here. All right, um, that's all we had for open session. Do you have any questions for tonight, Bob? No? Okay, awesome. Um, so, uh, we've got possible executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Bountiful Farms versus the town of Lakeville, Plymouth Superior Court Civil Action Number 2283 CV 00230. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, which he does, and votes may be taken in pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel interim town administrator and/or conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel interim town administrator and not return to open session. Maybe like entertain a motion to that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Member Carboni?
Carboni, aye.
Member Fabian?
Aye.
Member Day, aye. So we will now be going into executive session and not returning to open session. So Lake Cam, you're free to stop the streaming.
I need to set this up and then.